Well, set.
Good evening. My name is Bill Vignani.
Let me open the meeting.
I have a board of selectmen meeting in September 23rd, 2013. Would you kindly stand
and please join me in saluting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is public announcements. Does any board members have public announcements? If not, we'll move into public appointments. At 6:35, we have the Board of Selectmen and the Trustees of Veterans Memorial joint appointment to the vacancy on the Board of Trustees of Veterans Memorial Cindy Coyle. And tonight, we have the honor of having Billy Vigdani. If you'd like to make a recommendation, Bill.
Mr. Chairman, can I have my last name, please?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, you can. That's it? Yes, Bill.
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Bill Vignani, and I am the chairman of the Veterans Memorial Committee. On June 26th, after a few conversations with Cindy, we had a vacancy for a non-veteran on the board, and Cindy agreed to take it because she is very much interested in the veterans, especially our local veterans in Abington. And I explained the area that we are involved in and responsible for, and she was very much interested in that. And so, by a vote of three to nothing, with two abstainees, we voted to have Cindy come in on the board with us for a three-year term if... for your approval.
Thank you, Billy. Questions from the board?
This would just be to fill an unexpired term, so it wouldn't be a three-year term, right? It's just until the election.
Yeah. Which is... how long... what's the vacancy?
Three years.
Three years.
It's on the ballot.
Oh, it wasn't... okay, it was... okay, it was just an open post and a thing. And we're very lucky to have a qualified person step forward. I will say that. So, haven't heard the motion of Mr. Vigdani?
I'll move we approve the appointment of Cindy Coyle to the Board of Trustees of the Veterans Memorial for the unexpired term.
Have a motion by Mr. Donovan?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Dion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, it would be four, zero, one. I'm not sure technically if you should make a vote tonight from your board.
They should vote, yes.
So, you should accept a motion and then pass it. Just because this is a joint meeting, so you should re-vote again to appoint Cindy, just for the record. Do you follow that?
Yeah, I approve.
We approve Cindy is... Cindy Coyle is a non-veteran member of the board.
Yeah. I agree.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Congratulations, Cindy.
Very good.
We got that?
Andy had a list of questions for you, but I held them back.
Are we gonna swear right now or wait until...
Next order of business at 6:40 is Sandra Wright, Plymouth County Commissioner's update. Is Sandra here?
Yeah.
Waiting. We could put that on hold. At 6:50, we have Suha Dharan. It's not 6:50, and that is a public hearing. Not a public hearing, but it is a hearing. The residents were notified, so we're gonna wait on that. So, we'll move on to approval of the September 9th, 2013, open session minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Donovan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Coyle. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Next item is approval of the Greenway Boosters Door-to-Door Drive on Sunday, October 6th, 2013.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Dion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burbine. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Item number three is approval of Touch a Truck Event, November 3rd, 2013. I believe you have the information in your packet. It's from the South Shore Charter School, I believe. Something that they had here last year. So, any further discussion on that?
I just have a question. Do they have to have a liability insurance policy for that since it's on town property, or does that work?
Rick, do you know?
I'm sorry.
On the Touch a Truck event, does that organization have to have a liability insurance policy since it's on town property? I'm just curious.
The town would require where there's a minimum insurance policy that's recommended by the insurer. Usually, it's a $1 million total, 300 or 500 per event. So, the answer's yes.
And that will be provided?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if you look at the letter from this Mullen, she does state she will forward their insurance policy promptly.
How about hours? Were there any specific hours that were on this, or is it just a general?
That I don't know.
You know, Dory?
Pardon me?
Did they ask... I didn't see any specific hours that they were looking for. Was it just a general permit, or...
Yeah. They didn't have specific hours. We can find that out, though, and put it on the permit, the specific hours. I'm sure they're the same as last year. I'm just not sure what the hour's hand.
Yeah, you're talking little children.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll be...
You don't think it's gonna be like till midnight or anything like that?
I hope not. I hope not. Maybe they're gonna have a dance or something. I don't know. Okay. Any further questions? If not, I'd accept a motion.
So, move we approve the Touch a Truck event.
We have a motion by Mr. Burbine.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Dion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Number four is voting on special municipal employee status. I don't know if we should get into that. I guess we could.
See anybody here for that?
It's a wish to the board. I noticed you delayed that.
We waited for you.
Okay. Nobody wants to deal with it, but...
Let me make sure I understand. One of the pages here, we've got all of the boards. Is that the recommendation that we approved in 2012? For example, we had the South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation Advisory Board Member, the Fence Bureau, the Abington Art Council, Board of Assessors, Conservation Committee, Council on Aging, Finance Committee, Strawberry Valley Golf Course Committee, Griffin's Dairy Committee, Historical Commission, Abington Housing Authority, Abington Housing Partnership, Board of Library Trustees, Moderator, Deputy Moderator, Park and Rec Commission, Planning Board, Register of Voters, School Committee, Veterans Memorial, Zoning Board of Appeals, Animal Control Officer, Financial Finance Committee Secretary, Planning Board Secretary, Tax Incremental Financing Committee, TIF, Abington Representative on the Board of Directors of the South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation, Administrative Assistant to the Board of Selectmen, Zoning Board of Appeals and Conservation Committee, and the Sealer of Waits and Measures. If so, I'd make a motion to approve those committees.
Can I just ask if we can exempt out... because I can't vote on South Shore Tri-Town Development?
Let me withdraw my motion and exempt the South Shore Tri-Town Development Committee from that motion.
Advisory Board in the...
Advisory Board in the...
Yeah. And Tom, I would have to recuse myself from the Finance Committee. Oh, they're not on here, right?
Yeah, they are.
Okay. Finance Committee and the Moderator.
Can I just bring up a point?
Sure.
I think the policy says we're supposed to take each one individually. I think the Ethics Commission in their material says you should vote on each one individually.
That's fine.
So, I'd prefer if we vote on each one individually.
Run down the...
That's how we did last year. That's...
All right. So, I make a motion on Defense Bureau to approve.
Second.
Say that again, Tom, I need to get it.
I was gonna wait for Kevin.
Oh, that's right. You can't...
I mean, I'll just abstain.
Right.
All right. South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation Advisory Board Member. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Yes, motion. Haven't been seconded. You get that, Dory? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. That's unanimous.
I abstain.
Okay. Kevin abstains.
Can I just ask one question?
Was there a...
On these, they have yeses next to them. Some have nos and yeses. Those are responses that we got from our most recent...
Exactly.
...letter as to whether or not they still wanted the status or not.
Exactly.
So, for example, on the Planning Board, there's one yes. That means only one member responded?
Correct.
Okay. And I believe the policy is if you appoint one member of any commission or committee, you appoint the entire board.
The entire board.
All right.
Make a motion. We grant the Fence Bureau special municipal employee status.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Go ahead, Tom.
Will we approve the Abington Arts Council?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
I make a motion. We approve the Board of Assessors.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed. Again, I think that the policy that we adopted speaks to that, and they're a board that should not have special municipal employee status.
What say you, Commander?
I'm gonna vote for it.
Okay.
I have very mixed feelings about this whole thing. It's just that in the recent past, I really haven't seen a lot of people coming forward, and that's kinda disturbing. But anyways.
Well, last time, we had an opening on the conservation. We should... we have a ton of people.
Twelve people, I think.
Yeah, we did, but we just went through the Veterans Memorial where nobody stepped up for that, this elected thing. Let me just say this. If there is an issue with anybody doing something that's unethical, there's still other venues to, you know, solve those problems, as I see it. We have other avenues to go. So, I don't think that's the point here either.
No, I don't think that's the point either. We talked about the policy and why we adopted the policy, and that was to, you know, you can only serve one master. That's my feeling. And you can't represent somebody and serve on a board at the same time. You're at cross interests. And at least the perception is there is that you're at cross interests.
So, let me ask you this, then. What would happen to the Board of Assessors if we denied them the status?
Nothing. They'd still continue. They just wouldn't be able to represent somebody in front of a board or committee.
Yeah, but I think it... for me, it's a little broader. Any of these boards, my understanding of the law is if one of these members was denied special municipal employee status, and, for example, they were representing a youth group in front of the Park and Rec Commission to get a field permit, technically, they wouldn't be able to do that.
Technically, that's correct.
That's right. And I think that...
Technically, that's correct, yes.
That inhibits participation on these boards. And it would tend to more is not to run afoul of the law, is to resign... or maybe not resign, maybe not that drastic, but certainly to not be involved in these other sort of community activities or whatever. And I... for me, I just... I don't wanna put any member on any board in town in harm's way for some sort of oddball situation where I think we've gone through it before, and there were several that were like that. So, for me, I think that they, where there's been two people that requested, or even if there was one, that we should... should we approve it?
Just a couple of points. Number one, we did not have any board or committee in this town that had special municipal employee status until 2005. So, we lasted from creation until 2005 without a board or committee member having special municipal employee status, and there didn't seem to be any problems getting people to volunteer, to run for office. So, number one, in 2005, there was a list of 35 committees and boards that, like that, was all of a sudden made special municipal employees without really any particular reason.
Oh, no. I know what you're saying, but also...
Number one, and so, you know, we... again, we adopted a policy. The policy pretty much lays out why certain positions shouldn't have it, what positions we think shouldn't have it. And the Board of Assessors, in my opinion, is a type of a board that should not have special municipal employee status.
Well, having sat on the Tricentennial Committee and a group of citizens volunteers when this was first proposed, created a lot of uncomfortable feelings, a lot of uncomfortable from certain members of that board who were very, very well-meaning, but just had this cloud that they didn't quite understand over, can I get myself in trouble? There was fines, and we all know that was kind of scare tactics, but...
Well, it was, Mike. And I don't think the ethics law is out there to trap somebody who was trying to represent the boosters in front of the Board of Health to get a permit for, you know. That's just not what the ethics law is there for. It's there for people like me, who are an attorney or a real estate developer, not being able to sit on a board or a committee in the town and then represent a client in front of another board or committee. To me, that just... the appearance there is not good. I don't like it. I never did it when I was able to do it as the town moderator or the finance committee member or school committee member. I just didn't think it was the right thing to do. And I think that's why we adopted this policy, is so people will have a little more faith in their government that things are being done in a more transparent way.
We don't have it. We can't get it.
No, no, no. And I do agree with that, and transparency is very important.
And it's the perception. It's the perception.
It is.
It's not the fact that somebody is doing something wrong. It's just a perception. If you're sitting in a hearing, and here's, say, the chairman of the school committee, who is also an attorney, and he's representing somebody in front of the zoning board or the planning board, the person who's sitting opposed to that has a feeling that I am at a disadvantage here. This guy is serving on a board or a committee in this town. He knows people in this town as a result of his position, and now I'm at a disadvantage. And he may not be in reality, but his perception is that they are at a disadvantage. And I don't think that's a good way to run your government.
I do agree with that. If a person that we voted not to give, like, say, the Board of Assessors, we're talking about them, is there a way that they could, if they had an issue, that they could file with the town clerk, a form?
I believe so. They'd have to come in front of us and explain why they need the status, and we could grant the status if we thought it was warranted. But I think that's the only way to do it.
No, I would... okay. Let me say this, to be fair about that. On the Board of Assessors, I can... I think you make a valid point, and I also think Mr. Dion makes a valid point. Could we possibly have them come and explain why they would need that? Would that be a compromise?
Honestly, Mike, that's what the policy says. If they want the status, they're supposed to be here and tell us why they need the status.
But they're not gonna be the only board that I'm gonna vote against.
No, me either. No. There's others positions on here. I voted that way last year against them.
Just a couple of points, Andy, and I certainly respect your opinion, and it's a strong one, that you can only serve one master. But to the point, before 2005, we didn't have any issues. Before 2005, nobody, in my opinion, knew about this in town. Over the last two years, this board has highlighted this as an issue that, for me, it sort of conveys the message to the public that anybody that serves in public office is not ethical or whatever. The second point I'd make is although this didn't come up on town meeting floor, there was an ethics article that came up. It was brought up twice that was sort of in this genre of you have to file if you're gonna do anything with the town clerk. And it was, as you recall, it was deferred, or there was a motion that we didn't have a quorum. It was brought back in the fall. And as I recall, the people of the town overwhelmingly shot down that ethics article.
They did.
So, I think, to me, I think that most of the people in town spoke in that they would be in favor of if somebody wanted it or they applied, as the policy says. You don't have to vote for it, I agree. But where we did get application, for me, you know, I need to respect that. And again, I just know in getting on this board that there's a lot of people out there that frankly, in this town, think that, you know, are ethically challenged, and they will go after you for even my minutia things, like I inadvertently went and represented my youth sports group before the Park and Rec. You get a file, you know, there's some sort of a dispute filing with the Ethics Commission. Unfortunately, you're guilty. And again, I've seen the media play that up, that I don't wanna put people that serve on these boards in harm's way. So, I do respect what you're saying, and we've talked about it, I think, offline. And I can't say that you're wrong, but for me, I just... I can't in good conscience, you know, vote to restrict it or to not give it to people that apply.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, how did you people encaver? How did the cover board?
No, no, no.
Don't do this.
We have a policy, and we would offer the policy.
All right. I can understand both ways.
Thank you, Mr. Burbine.
That was well said. I guess I would like to follow the policy inasmuch as having the people come here and explain it. I think that's fair. I do think that's fair. That's what the policy says, that if they want this status, and I'm not saying good, bad, or indifferent, but I think it clearly states, and we mailed the policy and explained it to everybody, and they knew.
If you vote yes on everyone, they're not gonna have to explain, because the motions are gonna carry.
True, but the ones that are... the ones right now, the ones that are in, you know, being debated right now, I can...
We just voted for the Board of Assessors, so that's all set.
I can pull it back. You won.
I just say, Mike, I mean, to me, are we kicking it, the can down the road? If somebody comes up and says, "I need it," and he gives you reasons, I mean, are you prepared to change?
That's fine, but I think the policy, when we made it, is I remember, if the person really wanted it and had a good explanation of why they needed it, then they'd just show up in front of the board and explain it. And that was... that's not a... that's not a bad policy. I mean, it's easy enough just to say, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, yeah." I think I hear Mr. Dion and Mr. Burbine, and they're both valid arguments. But we did establish a policy, and I would think that we should at least, if they're debated... if they're not debated, because here's the issue. Say, I wanna ask for reconsideration on the Board of Assessors. Would we not then require everybody else to come before us? Everybody on this whole list?
The policy says that if they want it, they should be here to explain why they want it.
So, say, for instance, we get to the Finance Committee. That's going to be another issue?
Well, maybe.
You reach another one before that one.
The next one.
Exactly. I mean, it's not a surprise the way that any are gonna vote, because we did it the first time I gave.
No, no, no. And I actually...
Adventure to say you're gonna be the swing vote, so we have to build this up to each one of these.
You don't like that, but... Well, no. Quite frankly, I think it's either we follow the policy to that degree or we just eliminate it. I guess that's where I'm at with it. And if people... if we wrote them a letter, and we made it, and if you want it, then you should come before the board tonight. And that's not necessarily, you know, a bad thing. I guess I'm stuck on that right now. That's what I'd like to see, I guess. I know we don't have time. I know it's kinda like kicking the can down the road. But we did, as a board, establish a policy, and, you know, we might as well throw it out the door if we're not gonna follow it, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, would you like, not to kick the can down the road, but to postpone this and have me contact everybody, just saying very clearly at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, if you want the status, you must be present? Because I don't know that that was forcefully said in the letter that went out.
That's a great idea. I was just gonna say that.
All right.
It's up to the board.
That's fine. You know what? If the policy says that, which it does, and they weren't giving that clear indication, then I don't think it's fair to be...
Yeah.
Okay?
This whole issue, to be honest with you, though, has just been a cluster. It's just a... it's a mess. It's so confusing.
No, it's not confusing.
It is confusing, because stuff gets said that isn't quite true. You know, I'm a Lion Member of the Lions. I'm gonna vote. I'm gonna go to meetings for other boards that I'm gonna be a Lion, you know? I mean, just the way it's...
You can't, because you're a...
Well, I can't get up and... but I'm gonna be there and support the Lions.
Oh, sure. Well, there's no problem with that.
But then people take it. You can't talk in front of a board. You can't do that.
But that's not correct.
That's right. And I think it's scare tactics.
Well, it is. I agree with you there, Tom. Yes.
All right, so...
All righty, then.
We're gonna postpone.
Moving along.
How about the vote we took, though?
We took...
Well, we voted on two. I think in fairness...
We voted on three.
I think in fairness to that, I would like to see somebody make a motion to rescind those votes, and we'll go through the whole process.
Oh, we voted on Board of Assessors.
Kevin, what do you think?
Whatever you'd like there, Michael. We'll rescind... a motion to rescind all those appointments we just made, and we'll reconsider it after inviting...
I think the person that makes the motion is the only one that can bring it up, or is that not true from a procedure?
No, anybody who voted for it can move for reconsideration.
Yeah.
Kevin voted for all of them.
No, I didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mike's not sure how he voted on Solomon.
True.
Mike, you voted for all of them, so you could vote to reconsider.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reconsider. Just in the spirit of being fair and reasonable to everybody, I think we should do that.
That's fair, yes.
Okay, I made a motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Burbine. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? All opposed?
Nope.
No. Four, one, zero.
Yes, we just reconsidered.
Okay. Boy, we're moving right along now. Let's go back to 6:40 appointments. Sandra Wright, Plymouth County Commissioner's update, please. We're not always this bad, either.
I can sympathize.
We all can.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Very good.
Oops. Before I begin.
How come no Palada tonight, huh?
Well, I need to apologize. He's called out on a project up in the western part of the state, so he won't be able to be with us this evening, but he did want to extend his apologies to you. Maybe... I don't know if they have these or not. Okay. I just wanna thank you this evening for having us. Before I begin, I wanna thank Mr. Dion for being part of our advisory board. We greatly appreciate his support and the time that he's put in as representative for the town of Abington. I would also... I did express, you know, Commissioner Palada's apology again for not being able to be here. But since he's not here, I'd like to hit on a couple of things that he's been heading as commissioner. First of all, he started as the... let me see, where am I? Oh, he's taken on the task of county improvements that, you know, within all the buildings that we have in Plymouth County. They're in such needs of repairs, roofs, toilets, air conditioning, plumbing, et cetera, top to bottom. They're in desperate need of all kinds of repairs. Luckily, he has the knowledge and the means of doing that for us, and so he's taken that project on. We have also put in seven bills to the State House... excuse me, consisting of the courthouse rent, deeds excise, recording, reallocation, MOE, Maintenance of Effort, Stabilization Fund, Pension Obligation Bond, and recording increases. And before I begin, I'd like to tell you that these new commissioners that we have in the last couple of months on have been 100% improvement. The Plymouth County Government, County Government needed this group a long time ago to get things moving along. We've been working forcefully and as hard as we possibly can to get projects going. Excuse me. I'm fighting a cold this week. We have also taken on every challenge that we have faced. We feel any type of failure that it makes us better commissioners, because it makes us learn and fight harder to succeed. We get criticized a lot, but when we do, I like to think we keep in mind the acronym AIM. That stands for Be Attentive, Improve, and Make Money. And that's been our goal all along. Back in 2010, when I was running for county government, the first thing I realized out there, trying to get signatures, was not many people knew what county government was, and fewer knew what we did. So, I knew as soon as I came on as an elected official that we needed to get out there and educate the people in telling them what we did. So... and this is where I'm going to begin to tell you what we do, and I'm sure some of you know what we do. Most of... most do not know what the direct assessment to the counties or to the communities of the Plymouth County operation is, but I'm more than happy to tell you, it is about $1,358,920.36, depending, of course, on the size of the town, which works out to be about $2.73 per resident per year. That's amazing to me. And with that $2.73, I'm gonna tell you what we do for that. We have the Registry of Deeds, the finest in New England, and we have one of the best register of deeds, Mr. John Buckley. We have two satellite offices, Rockland and Brockton. We have the ownership and maintenance of three district courthouses, Brockton, Hingham, Wareham. The administration and financial management of the Mayflower Municipal Health Group. The operation of a parking ticket process program for more than 30 governmental entities. Excuse me. The management and oversight of a bulk purchase bid for municipal vehicles, gas and diesel fuel, and police and fire equipment. The operation of a 4-H extension agricultural program. We have the operation, maintenance, and management of a fire control plane. Funding, support for firefighter training program in Plymouth County. Funding and great support for local tourism and... program in Plymouth County. Funding and great support for local tourism in Plymouth County. The administration of federal grants available through county government. And just recently, as I was running in 2010, I had said that I wanted to do dredging, which we were just able to get $250,000 from the state to start dredging, or go into a dialogue with the different harbor masters in the seacoast. We're going to start in the seacoast. My first intentions were to do it inland, but we're going to start on the seacoast and start doing some dredging. So, we just started a dialogue with the harbor masters within, I think there are 11 towns down there that could use it desperately. And then we'll move on inland to start doing some dredging. It's desperately needed in all different areas. Our lakes and ponds are diminished, and our natural resources are just going away before our, before where we stand now. Over the past, you know, many, many years, you've seen our natural resources diminish, and there's great need to develop and make that natural resource, to come back before they become cranberry bogs and other means of industry. So, that's what I've begun to do, is the dredging. And I know we have a lot of different projects going on. I'd like to introduce my Commissioner Greg Hanley. He also has a project that he's heading. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. And Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to come to speak before you. If you would allow me, Mr. Chairman, as a moment of personal privilege, I'd like to thank the residents of Abington. It's my first opportunity to say thank you since the election, getting the faith of the voters behind me. As Sandra stated, this group of commissioners is a very hard-working group. We all have, at some point on the local level, elected municipal experience. Mr. Palada was a former selectman in the town of Hanover. Sandra is a current counselor in the town of Bridgewater, and I'm a former selectman in Pembroke, and a former city council from the city of Quincy. So, collectively, and through the leadership of the chairman, we've been allowed to work on projects that we believe affect the bottom line of a lot of communities. In particular, Sandra outlined what you have known to be the assessment in the services provided by the county. We're here to talk about a few programs that we have put together in public-private partnership with some entities that we think will be helpful to our member communities. If you look at the first handout that was handed to you, Plymouth County has put together a energy collaborative with a company called Power Management. Power Management is a broker of energy services in New England. They have contacts with all of the major utilities and a number of communities across the country. How they work in this particular scenario is that at no cost to the community, you can use them as a consultant on anything from ESCOs to rebates and tariffs on your telephone poles. They have integrated management systems. There's just a litany of things that you can see in the back on the brochure. What they propose to do for any community that is willing to utilize the service is that they'll design a comprehensive energy management program for electricity and natural gas, and they would devise procurement and management services of those contracts. As the literature says, they're an unbiased group. They're working in partnership with the county. So, if you have a need, and most communities do, whether they have an energy committee, or if you have folks in your DPW or your facilities groups, they're always looking to improve efficiencies of systems, et cetera, et cetera. This is an opportunity for you, at no cost, to involve them in your projects. All you'd have to do is pick up the phone. The principal is Dr. Kevin Kelly. He will directly respond to you, but you reach out to us in the county, and we'll make arrangements for you to meet with him. So, this is one of the first projects we did right out of the chute, and we think you'll be able to take advantage of that. Are there any questions on that? I can move on. Tom?
Greg, just the other night, it wasn't clear how it works. Let's say you have spending a million dollars on some form of energy. Let's say it's electric, and these folks come in and determine they can save you $200,000. Do they take a percentage of that savings? Is that their business model?
First of all, they're exempt from Chapter 30B, so their services are being offered to you. If you move forward in a recommendation that they adopt, then that would be the model. It would be, out of the energy savings, you, they would get paid a percentage, but it would be negotiated between the entities. And out of that, the county would receive a portion of the quote-unquote profit of that, and then we would then redirect that revenue towards our general fund to hopefully in a, through one of our legislative pieces is to have a, an account where we could put revenue in. We're $64 million in the hole. We have $50 million in unfunded pension liability, and $14 million of debt in the courthouses. So, we owe that with really no means or methods to raise revenue, to pay those bills. So, the assessment covers some of it, but at that rate, you know, it's just not good. So, we're trying to build business models where we can create revenue. So, if there's no questions on that, I would recommend that you share that with your superintendent of public schools, your DPW, and any of your facility folks. Again, a free service and worth taking advantage of. The next item is the Plymouth County Solid Waste Regional Initiative Program. We, in March, were able to secure a $20,000 grant from Bridgewater State University, who gave us two graduate students who looked at the idea of regional trash. And a report was generated to talk about the pros and cons. I, to be honest with you, I should have done my homework before I got here and found out exactly where Abington is in its municipal waste. But if you're familiar with the Covanta contracts that, about 25 years ago, there were single-tier communities that bought into an idea of sending their refuse down to CMass, where they would then burn the trash for energy. And anyone who participated in that time, called single-tier, were allowed to get a rate of about $20 a ton for about 20 years. Now, with those expiring contracts, communities are able to either renew at a rate that is agreeable to them and their community, or go outside of their contract. And what we're proposing, in particular, I'll just speak to the town of Pembroke, we were known as a second-tier community, who came in under the Covanta contract at $65 a ton, and currently, we are at $113 a ton, with costs escalated. So, we're at the end of our contract. Covanta approached us about renewing. We're going to ride it out in Pembroke till 2015, and there are 13 communities that have expiring contracts. The idea behind it, in the findings of the Bridgewater State Report, were that regionalization is the way to go. This Friday, the town of Waymouth is hosting us up in Waymouth, outside of the county, because they want to become a member of our collaborative. Plymouth County Commissioners, at their last meeting, created an entity known as the Plymouth County Municipal Trash Cooperative. And we are an entity that hopefully DEP will recognize as someone who will be in charge of regional buying and bulk purchasing. Specifically, on the 27th, Mayor Su-Kay is going to speak about the economies of scale that can be realized. If you, you are in some public partnerships with the town of Waymouth already. They bring about 15,000 households, and when you look at the equation of trash for the haulers and for the trash recipients, I should say, the dumps, or wherever it may be, tonnage means money to them. And when you can combine the buying power of tonnage of 10 to 14 communities, you now have a block of buying that you can, as Ernie Box says, if you can buy for less, you can sell for less. So, this is at its very infancy. You have an opportunity to participate or not. You would be considered a single-tier community, and we have to, this is our second meeting of this group, and after this meeting, we'll be contacting the vendors. So, we have to establish first, how many communities, how much tonnage, and then we'll invite the providers in to talk to us about different possibilities. There are opportunities out there in the private sector. Those are for-profit entities. Those are companies that can come in and tell you, this is the tonnage today, and if you sign right now. We're taking a more holistic approach, a county-wide approach, where we're all in this together. And so, if you choose to join, you're welcome to come. We're going to be talking about every component of trash and et cetera. So, any questions on that? Okay, lastly, we'd just like to make an announcement on behalf of the Plymouth County Register, John Buckley, that he is hosting a series of workshops that will allow your folks in conservation, planning, all of your boards that have requirements for any kind of mapping, logistics, anything that you would need from the Registry of Deeds to help you and assist you in providing better service for your residents. I think it's, the outline says it's either the first or the last Thursday of the month.
It's the first.
First Thursday of the month. You're allowed to come down. You have to pre-register because space is limited. But the idea of the modernization of the registry has borne fruit, and the more we educate folks as to the online capabilities that will help your employees deliver the services better, the register makes that announcement, and we share that with you. Looking forward, we are working again in collaboration with Bridgewater State University, and the idea of engineering and engineering services is the next regional thing we're going to look at. I don't know about your community, but in my community, we have five different engineers for conservation, planning, zoning, and selectmen. We have Koppelman and Page on the legal side, and at a future date, we'll be looking at legal services. But the next entity will be engineering, and we'll do a, again, another partnership along the ways of what we've already done with, with the other things. So, with that, I thank you for the opportunity. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Kevin?
Just more of a trivia question. Is the, is the county plane still the 1957?
It is.
The former chair will answer that one.
The plane?
Yeah.
I believe it's the original plane.
1957.
It could be.
Do you know the name of it was? The Elva B. Elva, for Elva Bent, who was the first woman county commissioner.
Really?
Elva Bent, who was Gloria Murphy's mother.
I didn't know.
Judge Murphy's. So, there you go.
Thank you very much. I did not know that.
Just another, if I could. It went back, way back when, when I was down there. We, actually Martha Campbell from Abington, who's now deceased, she was the historian, she was the county historian. And we had, at that time, all the old colony records from when the pilgrims came over. And I know it was very intriguing to me at the time, and they were always in the vault. Have they done anything with those in terms of now with the new Registry of Deeds building, to bring them out, to put them on display at all?
No, we haven't. We do have that in discussion, though, that, you know, we do want to display them at some point. We've looked into a lot of different options, even as far as the Smithsonian, but I think that, you know, instead of the Smithsonian, I think we should keep it local within our, within Plymouth County. That's, you know, taxpayers, those are their records, and we'd like to display them. Right now, we don't know where we're going to live, because we have to find a new building to be in. So, hopefully, when we find a building to move into, that we will have something or somewhere where we'll be able to display them at that time.
No, I would encourage that again, only because there's so much history down there, and it goes back, obviously, to the pilgrims. And I know at one point, people, you know, we had to put them under lock and key.
Right.
Because people were actually ripping pages out of the book to take home with them, so, but, just my...
We try to keep them locked up. We don't really let, you know, the public go in to see them, and it's really unfortunate. We should display them, you know, again, they are the people's records. And there's a great lot of, you know, lot of history there, which is, you know, too bad, you know, they're not available to be seen. One of the other things that I wanted to also throw out to you, and I know that there's been a lot of talk, you know, when I was discussing about the dredging, a lot of talk about the flood insurance, and, you know, some of these towns that are really being hit hard by the flood insurance. And, you know, the discussion out there is that if we dredge ponds and lakes and the oceans properly, then we may not have, you know, this problem with the flood insurance. So, you know, this is something down the future, and I really hope that we have the support of everybody, or all the towns, to go ahead and, you know, do the dredging. It's really not something that, you know, necessarily needs to be done. It's a way of life now, because, you know, the rains and the, if they're not rehabilitated, then you're going to lose them. And a lot of people, a lot of different places, if you go out there and look at your ponds and lakes, they have diminished, and they are going away. So, look forward to your support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very interesting.
One last thing, Mr. Chairman, if I may. It slipped my mind, and I know it's going to be something that concerns you, pension obligation bonds.
It's on our agenda.
It's on your agenda. It is a function of the Retirement Board and the County Treasurer. However, you could be helpful in this matter, and we have currently a House bill that we have filed to allow Plymouth County to issue pension obligation bonds. And I will get you the information, Mr. Chairman, but a resolution, do you have it?
Pension obligation.
Yep. House Bill 3377, Mr. Chairman. If a vote of the committee, the Board, could accompany your delegation, that would help us immensely. We, our bills are in various committees at this point, and that would be something that would be self-help right off the bat. And if we get enough folks lobbying together, we're going to be able to help some people with reduced interest rates on their pension obligations. And I bring that on behalf of the County Treasurer.
Can you send us a copy of the legislation?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Really, all, all seven of them are, you know, very important. I know that that's one that, you know, we would want first, but we are working very hard at, you know, these different things that we put into the House, and we need to get them moving along. This is something that has never been done in the past. And I just, you know, thank every single day that I have these new commissioners to work, you know, right behind me and, or with me, or beside me, I should say. And, you know, we're really making and getting things going. We've been going, ever since they've come in, we've been going fast and furious and, and to get these issues dealt with. Because, you know, again, I feel, you know, myself, I feel that, you know, county government is a very effective form of government. We do it better, and we do it cheaper, so why not? So, I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you for the enthusiasm. It's great.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, right now, we're going to go back to 6:50, continuation of the Abington Citco, 115 Brockton Ave. Increased hours. I see Mr. Whiting.
Good evening, all. I'm George Whiting, 100 Colonel Hunt Drive, here in Abington. And I've had the pleasure to represent Sahid Durani, the owner and manager of the Abington Citco Gas Station at the intersection of Brockton Avenue, Rockland Street, actually 115 Brockton Avenue. I apologize for the fact that my client is unable to be here with us this evening, but he asked me if I would be willing to extend to you his best wishes, number one, and to also expand upon the many efforts that he has made to comply with what the town had suggested that he do in order to be a good neighbor, as well as a good businessman, within our, our area. I would suggest to you that lighting was at one time a problem. He's had several different lighting companies, including the municipality of Abington, the lighting company that takes care of us, have a look at the lights, and they've been boxed in so that there's not much in the way of any overflow, if you will, of the lights. He has seen to it that his property is well-maintained at all times. He's out there with a blower at, during business hours, in order to make sure, I beg your pardon, to make sure that there are no, no refuse, no leaves more than would at this time be expected. He's also complied with the hours and the restrictions that have been placed upon him, not opening the gas station before 6 o'clock in the morning, and closing promptly at 11 o'clock at night. He has been very watchful in, on the idea of his car wash, which is at the rear of his building, making sure that it was not open before 8 o'clock in the morning and was closing promptly on time. We realize that there have been problems in the past, and we would also ask you to acknowledge the fact that it's very difficult to run a gas station in such a residential area with so many people around. He indicated to me that he has had a lot of feedback from a lot of the neighbors who have been very appreciative of the measures that he has taken to be a good neighbor. And I had hoped that some would be here this evening to speak their piece and tell you exactly what, what his business acumen has done for their needs and their livelihoods. I know that they have been to him and expanded on their thoughts and so forth. I know that they have been to him and expanded on their thoughts and so forth. His, every effort has been to make a living here in town, to have a business that we could be proud of, that provides for the citizens of the town and those that are passing through, a decent price for the gasoline and the other products that he sells upon the premises. I would submit to you that he is one of the top businesses mentioned in the enterprise whenever they do list the different prices for gasoline within the area. He's always within the top five or six, from my reading of things. And I would say that also is a tribute to his efforts to try to be a good neighbor, a good competitor for other businesses. And finally, I recall that the last time I was here, we were discussing the various other businesses in town that might enjoy, at the present time, 24-hour hours of operation. And Dory had come up with a list of several, both unfortunately in the North Abington area, one at the Baptist Church Corner and the other at Howard's Corner, that mobile station down there. I would submit to you that neither is off by itself in a, in some lowly unresidential area, if you will, that they have neighbors, that they haven't had, at least to my knowledge from what I'm able to gather, any complaints about the hours of their being open. Yes, the cars come, the cars go, and the, every effort is made to keep the noise level at a minimum, and I would assure you that that is Mr. Durani's wish as well. At the present time, he seeks no increase in the hours of his car wash. I don't know anybody that really wants to wash their car in the middle of the night, but, and again, I don't know everybody, but to expand on his hours of operation would be very helpful to him. I think he's shown his good deeds and his good intentions by complying with each and every concern that was put forth by your board and also by several of the neighbors. And I would suggest to you that he would be a tribute and an asset to our area. And it would also give a 24-hour openness to the center of Abington. And there are a lot of cars that go by on Route 18 headed to and from Brockton, and there's more traffic at that hour than you'd want to believe. I go to the gym myself, and I usually try to get there around 6:00 in the morning. I can assure you, the lights don't go on until 6:00. And at 6:05, the place is very, very busy. A lot of people shopping inside, a lot of people stopping for gas. So it would be very helpful to him. He'd be able to show you what he's able to do and wishes to do here in the town of Abington, and we would appreciate all your consideration. And I'd handle any questions that might be forthcoming.
Questions?
No, I think the, my main focus was, I wanted to know how many other stations within the town had 24-hour operation, and there are three of them, two in North Abington and one in Center Abington, and all three about neighborhood, pardon me, neighborhoods.
Thank you. Just as a matter of technicality, was this a public hearing?
Well, that was going to be my question.
If this is pursuant to your bylaw that allows you to set regulations, is this not pursuant to the licensing of the land as a matter of law?
Okay. No, I just saw that it was a public hearing here, and it wasn't bound in yet, so that's fine.
Rick, just to that, I think we talked about this the last time. The minutes reflect that we placed restrictions on the license as far as the hours go. So the minutes state, after much discussion, it was agreed to place restrictions on the license as follows. Gas station to be open Monday through Sunday, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. So is that not?
I think the license may be, generically, in that regard, because you don't have a specific license other than the underground fuel tank license for the location. You don't have any other license at that particular location.
So you couldn't place restrictions on that license? It's either you vote to include the, to approve the underground storage tank or you vote not.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
So again, these would be pursuant to your bylaw that allows you to respond to a citizen's concerns, place reasonable restrictions.
Okay, thanks.
So that means that any gas station in town that wants to be 24 hours could be, they just could just come up to the board and say, they don't even have to go up to the board, right? They could just say, we're 24 hours tomorrow morning?
In effect, if the zoning does not prohibit that, or if it's, if the zoning allows for that, the answer would be correct. The issue with this location is that sometime in the recent past, there have been citizen complaints. And pursuant to the town's bylaws, the selectmen have the legal ability to respond to those citizens' complaints by putting reasonable restrictions on locations, even if they are operating within the appropriate zoning. So that is what caused you to put restrictions on this location and within the last couple of years. And that is essentially why the establishment is coming in to you to ask you to change those restrictions.
And the zoning in that location?
The zoning there does not prohibit what's being requested. That's not the issue.
Good, thank you.
Any further questions? If not, questions from the audience? And if you would just please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm Patricia Rieger. I live at 27 Rockland Street. I've lived there for 32 years. The gas station has always been there. There's never been any problems until recently. Last year, we were here with a number of problems. Even though he agrees to keep the gas deliveries from being made late at night or early morning, such as 3:00 or 4:00, it still continues. He uses that blower, correct, like, correct, he does use a blower, but he uses it to blow everything into the street, which then the cars blow into my yard. We spend a lot of money keeping our property up. The vacuums continue to be used outside of the hours of 8:00 to 8:00. On July 26th, the noise from the vacuums could be heard in my house at 10:00 p.m. Last year, as it suggested, that the power of the vacuums be turned off to prevent people from using them. He does not do that. The lights from the station continue to be bright. I don't know if any of you have gone by there when it's open at night. They're very bright, almost the front of their gas station, almost looks like it could be Vegas. As far as him being open 24 hours, I feel that the station, if he is allowed to be, it will deeply impact the value of my house and when I go to sell it and the neighborhood. As property owners in Abington, we pay our taxes and should be given some consideration also. I'm also afraid that keeping the station open all night, it'll create people hanging out there in the middle of the night and worried about robberies. I know 7-Eleven has been robbed more than once. I know he can't control what people do when they park their cars and they leave them idling with the lights shining into my house and the radios blasting, but this would be very disturbing in the middle of the night. Abington already has three all-night gas stations, and 7-Eleven is also open all night. Alls I'm asking is for a peaceful, enjoyable night's sleep like everybody else wants. And if any of the, if you have driven by the gas station, like I just said, at night, those lights are really very, very bright still. And he just doesn't seem to care. We saw him blowing the stuff in the street, and he was waving to us and smiling like it was a big joke. So I just don't think he should be allowed to be open for 24 hours to impact my life and my neighborhood.
Gentlemen, Stan Kogut, 27 Rockland Street. I'll be a bit, a little bit more explicit about things than Patricia, because I like to back things up with material. Okay? There's three stations within two miles of this gentleman, one at 139 and 18. And one side, on one corner, there's a used car lot. The other corner is a Dunkin' Donuts and a Subway. The other corner is a Sunoco station. So that four corners, there's two gas stations, a used car lot, Dunkin' Donuts, and a Subway. There's no residential in that four corners. Maybe behind them, there is. 123 and 58. You got a Sunoco station. Next to it is Deanne's. Across the street from it is a Dairy Queen. Across the street, on the other side, is a Honeydew. And on the other corner, it's an empty lot that used to be a used car lot. Again, nobody lives in the, right in the corner, right, right there. 139 and 58, which is Abi, is Adam Street. That prime has been, I don't think it's been open six months. It's been under construction for a couple of years. I think they just opened some repair facility there also. But across from them is a church. Alongside of them, in Abington Center, is little variety stores, restaurants, whatever. And across the street, I'm not saying it's not residential, but it's a different type of residential, because they're transit, they are apartments. And generally, you get a different outlook when you're renting an apartment than you do if you're a homeowner. Because you, you rent an apartment not to be there for 32 years, like Patricia, and I've been there with her for 17 years. Cumberland Farms, down the corner, about, about a, two quarters of a mile down the street from 18 and 123. They used to be open 24 hours a day, but no longer. Now they're closing at 11:00. You know why? Robberies, police calls, 7-Eleven, police calls. The mobile station has had a problem. Opening, there is no traffic at 11:00. I lived there, and you know something? I see more than probably everybody else, because I'm basically retired. So I'm around there 24 hours a day. I'm not there seven days, seven hours a day or whatever. This man is open for 17 hours a day. He is, price-wise, gas-wise, he's $3.49. I purposely went around to the local gas stations to check today before we got here. Two, four, six other stations, the prices are $3.49, $3.47, $3.57, $3.47, $3.53, and $3.51. That's the mobile, those two are always higher than everybody else in the town. That's the mobile and the Sunoco up at 139 and 18. He's, he's doing volume based on pricing. That's a, that's a business attitude. I used to own a business, too. Used to sell product a little cheaper, because you make it up hopefully in volume. 5:00 in the morning, he said there was no, nothing. There's a gas delivery. This is the blower. And this is when he, my stepdaughter, was trying to take this picture, and he made some sort of an gesture to her. The guy that was doing it backed off, and he wouldn't use the blower anymore. Who got it? The owner himself. He got behind it. And he's blowing it out right into the street. I worked my butt off to keep the lawn, I planted grass, spent a lot of money, and now I get lottery tickets, everything else, blowing. I saw him purposely today, blowing it out right onto Rockland Street, coming out in Rockland Street with the blower and blowing it down the street towards all the residents. Why don't he be a businessman, sweep it up and pick it up and dispose of it? He's got a lawn service guy that worked with him. This is lighting. This is how bright it is at night. Now, we're 50 feet away, we're, the width of Rockland Street. It comes in my stepdaughter's bedroom. She cannot open the blind at night. Do we want it open at midnight? These doors are supposed to be closed for the car wash. There it is, open.
What time was that, Stan?
During the day. These doors are supposed to be closed after a car goes through.
Okay.
Okay? Close down, or they're supposed to come down and close when the car's being washed, so you don't have to smell the stuff. Okay? It's open.
Do they usually work like that, or is that?
Oh, yeah. They usually work like that.
Okay.
That's the way they're supposed to work. But he had an employee that go over there, throw a switch, and leave them on. Friday, 7:26, 10:00 p.m., the vacuums will be unused. My stepdaughter woke up. August 28th, gas being delivered at 10:30 at night. August 31st, gas being delivered at 5:30 in the morning. Noise regulations for the town of Abington. Excuse me. Just give me a minute. Chronic or repeated exposure to excessive noise is recognized by public health experts as hazardous to both physical and mental health. It can cause number of ailments, including emotional stress, which I have. You're supposed to laugh with that. Nobody asked you, Rick. Fatigue, which I do really get, because I don't sleep, all right? High blood pressure, I do get it, because I happen to be a Polish extent, extraction or whatever here, and I get my blood up. When, when somebody doesn't do what they're told, even when I had a business, the worst stupidity is, I can understand people make mistakes. That's the way they put races on pencils. But stupidity is just, hello, don't do it, when they're told what to do. Hearing loss, damage to hearing from excessive noise can be permanent. Hearing loss cannot be restored with therapy. The Abington Water Health declares excessive noise a nuisance. Nuisance is the car wash. That is excessive noise. When the blowers go off. I don't know how many times in the last two years that we have had people over the house. I had one person walking up the driveway, heard it go off, and turned around and walked out, was not interested even looking at the house because of that. Okay, you say, that's not his problem. Well, you know something? It is his problem, because, you know, we don't do anything to disrupt his business. And all I'm looking for is a little bit what everybody else in this room has, peace and quiet at night, just like he does. I don't go into his neighborhood and do what he's doing to us. I have, and his lawyer, Whiting here, sent out a letter. I was shocked, absolutely shocked, that whoever was sending them out didn't do diligent, and I don't know why they sent it to me, asking me to go there, to call the border, the board of selectmen. I called Rick and told him. I get, I read it to him. I'm looking for it right now. I don't even think I, it's somewhere in this pile, but, no, that, no, that's not it. That's not it. Well, anyway, I also wrote up a petition here, and I don't know where he's coming up from, because these are the butters, myself and Louds, Louds Court, has four houses on it. Every single one of them, the three houses, everybody that lives there has signed this petition, except for one lady that's right behind the firehouse. Okay? Everybody else on the street. And the, and the two houses down the very end, the woman I was speaking to said, no way that she wanted it 12:00. I says, well, why don't you come up to the board? For some reason, these people, there's, they have a handicapped person, it's hard to get up here. The lady that was here the last time, that lives on 37 Elm Street, right across from this gas station, 79 Elm, signed this. She was gonna, she was up here the last time, but obviously, nothing was, we didn't have an opportunity at that time. Okay? She couldn't get up here tonight, because she's got a nine-month-old baby, that she had to go to work and her husband's babysitting. The lady behind me- The lady behind me that has signed this, Cheryl Four, Loser Twenty-Five Louds Court, is, is a, is a X-ray technician, and she works nights. It's difficult for these people to get up here at a meeting. And unless I went around, I don't know who these, this letter was sent to, okay? In the neighborhood, because anyone here is a butters. There's only four, five, six, seven houses basically rebutting it. So they couldn't have sent the letters to everybody in the neighborhood. All right? And I purposely called to see if there was any response, and I don't think there was. In favor. I have everything not in favor in writing with signatures.
Can we, can we see that, Stan, as you...
I'm sorry?
Could we see that?
Sure, absolutely. I should have made...
Copy's like the last night, gentlemen. Who wants to see it?
Just down here.
All right. Start it down here. Huh? Yes. Yeah. Oh, oh, yeah, that's it. We made another copy. Here, we start this one. Quiet. No, I'll give you your copy.
It's from the last meeting.
Right, that's right. The noise regulations, I have complained about the car wash right along during the day. Like I said, the blowers go off, they're like jet engines. You can sit in a house and you can hear it. He's done nothing to lower that noise. The station used to have, he did have an electrician, yes, they put a box around one light. You can see the lights on the building and, and the property. It does nothing. The company, Citgo, come in and increased all the wattage. When they redid the, redid the pumps and everything, right after he put the tanks in. If I had a picture of that prior to the tanks going in, and this over here after the tanks go in, you would see a major difference. He doesn't care. He doesn't live there. He's making money, he doesn't live there. So why should he worry?
Stan, is your property, how is it zoned?
Ri, I'm sorry?
Your property, the house that you live in, how, what's the zoning there and in Louds Court? Is it zone residential or...
I think it's a combination. I personally have not looked into that. I think it's, but it would have to be business residential, okay? Because that's, like she said, that station was always there. Okay? And she lived there thirty-two years and never had this. And the, the, the guy lied through his teeth when he said that the other owner was there at ten, eleven o'clock at night. He was not, am I right?
No, he said the other owner used to open five-thirty, the other owner...
Oh, never opened five-thirty, always open nine o'clock in the morning. Like, uh, like the other one, uh, I'm trying to think of the, uh, the follow-up around the corner that's involved with the, with, with the school committee and everything. He's always done everything. St. Patrick's Day parades, the gas...
Bailey's.
I'm sorry?
Jack Bailey.
Jack Bailey. He opens...
Wouldn't know who that was.
Okay? Jack Bailey, he opens at a certain time, and he closes at six o'clock. That's how the follow was that used, the Italian follow that used to have the gas station. Okay? And he had no car wash at the time. And we, unfortunately, when they put in for that, were away on vacation and didn't even know, okay? We never, we, we never got the notice at the time because we were away for a couple of weeks. Otherwise, we certainly would have been up here. We, we put up with this three hundred and sixty-five days a year, seventeen hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. There is also, under the noise regulations in the town... I'm almost through, guys, or you'll throw me out. Nighttime hours, the hours between six P.M. and seven A.M. of the following weekday, uh, the following day on weekdays, together with all the hours on Saturday, Sunday, and legal observed holidays. There is a distinction here in the town ordinance regulations with Saturday and Sunday and nighttime. They are not considered working time for noise. But this guy operates the same on a Sunday as he does on a Tuesday or a Monday. But according to the noise regulation of the town, they're supposed to be different. They even, they even quantify that by having different hours on a Saturday or a Sunday over Monday through Friday, and it distinct about that.
Stan, when you were here last, I, I think the question was asked, did, have you approached him on a one-on-one basis?
Oh, absolutely. You know, you know what he said to me? What gives you the right? I said something. He says, what gives you the right? Because you're born here? Okay? I said, no, what gave me the right? Maybe I was born here, but I served in the military for four years, four years too. He says, oh, there's a problem. Okay? I don't need that. Him insulting me for my service in the armed forces? That's exactly what, all right? That's his attitude. And I told, and, and, and as you could tell, my temperament is such, I don't appease everybody. Okay? I don't mind saying what I feel. And all he's saying is shut the damn thing off. He don't care, because you know what? The only, I heard him over here the, the last time he was here, you could hardly talk, hear him, and the only, he's, I gotta, I'm losing money. If you're losing money, go up on your gas prices like everybody else. Well, gentlemen, I know you're tired of hearing me. So, any questions you want me to answer?
Questions from the board?
Please?
What's that right now? Uh, Stan, I think they're done.
This is the one I gave.
Stan, let me give you these pictures too.
Okay, any other people would like to be heard?
It's pointless to say that issues such as this happen all too often, and it's very difficult to promote harmony in the business world when it skirts up against residential properties. I would submit to you that my man has done all he could and continues to do all he can to be mindful of the people that live around him. I've been in touch with some of the heads of the departments here at Town Hall and out on the various other departments such as police. Uh, I've talked many times with Sharon White. There was an issue at one point about the dumpster, and that has been resolved. There was an issue that you heard it tonight about the noise situation, and she has found nothing that violates the terms of that noise ordinance. She has shown that she has had no problem with our wishing to expand on the hours of the operation. We've tried to be mindful of the neighbors. We've cut back on the lights, as I said, and I have several people from the utilities that have told me personally, I can't drag them out at night, needless to say, but they have reviewed the situation with the owner and operator of the business, and they have done all that they can to try to dim the lights as much as possible in order that they not shine out and on other houses and cause problems there. My understanding was that people on Elm, on Elm Street are happy with the improvements and the adjustments that have been made by my client. And he sent me here to just expand upon the various things that he has done. And, you know, I'm not talking a monetary situation necessarily, but when you do spend thousands of dollars in order to try to be a good neighbor within the town, recognizing the location of the gas station itself, um, being mindful of the hours and of the operation, and the various requirements and maybe restrictions that have been placed upon him, I would suggest to you respectfully that he has done everything that he can in order to be a good neighbor in a rather difficult situation. I thank you for your consideration, and I wish he could have been here with me to, to expand a little bit more perhaps, because he was right there on the scene throughout all improvements and adjustments. Unfortunately, he was unable. So I hope you'll take what I've presented to you this evening and consider it, and we thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wery. Questions from the board? Tom?
I just, um, as you know, I'm in a constant state of confusion, but just, just based on what we got from the town manager is that I'm still confused when we make the statement that changing to twenty-four hours is not technically a licensing decision to be made by the board. So I guess my question is, is there any options this board has to restrict it from a twenty-four by seven? Are we basically not empowered to do that? Is it some other zoning board, or, I guess that's where I'm kind of confused, why we're having a, in effect, a public hearing and what, what options do we have, I guess is my question.
Well, the, right now, the, the hours of operation have been set by the board in response to a prior complaint. You have the option to maintain those restrictions as is or amend those restrictions that the board has placed on the operation. And again, that's pursuant to the town's general bylaw. In this particular case, you, obviously, you could either be amenable to or deny the application. They have the right under the, the town zoning bylaws to be open the time that's being requested. The only question is, is the board willing to lift the restrictions that you've placed on the location based upon prior complaints? Or whether you want to do that, or do it conditionally, do it for a period of time, don't do it at all? I understand the confusion because generally, these things are done by, you know, would be found in zoning, special permits, or other conditions that are required through zoning. But you don't have those restrictions available right now in, in Abington. But what you do have is your bylaw, and again, the restrictions that are currently on the operation were done pursuant to your, for lack of a better term, nuisance bylaw.
So what, what you're saying is going back to February twenty-seventh, twenty-twelve, this board put restrictions of Monday through Sunday, six A.M. to eleven P.M. on the hours of operation?
Correct.
Which if we took no action, that's...
That would remain in place. Correct.
No, I, I understand where we are and, to me, it's, it's a shame that, and I know it's difficult, that the neighbors, what's, what's the gentleman's name that you represent, George?
Mr. Durante.
Mr. Durante, and, and the neighbors can't seem to come to a, some sort of a resolution here, but we, we place those restrictions on for certain reasons. And again, I'm, I'm listening to one, one neighbor, and those reasons, to me, still seem to be there. It, it, to me, it hasn't changed all that much. The vacuum is still being run after eight, eight P.M., if the lights are still shining people's windows, you know, I, I have a difficult time changing the, the hours at this point.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't believe that Mr. Durante has done all that he can. I mean, I would like for him to, at some point, just finally say, I've done everything that I can't, you know, I, I can't get along with these people, or I've done everything they've asked to be. We have a neighbor saying that he's not doing everything he can. I mean, blowing, blowing things onto the street in, in and of itself is not right when you can sweep it up or vacuum it up with one of those trucks. You shouldn't be blowing stuff onto a, a public street. I believe that's, I know showing snow onto the street is wrong, but I think that, you know, that's, that's wrong too. The vacuums, I've been across the street when they've gone off, they sound like an airplane taking off. And if they go, if that, if that's happening at eight o'clock, that's a clear violation. These people want peace and quiet at night, that's all they're asking for. If they get peace and quiet at night, then I would be in favor of maybe expanding their hours a little bit, but until I have proof or verification by other neighbors too that there is peace and quiet, then I would be probably, keep the hours the way they are.
Just, I had made a suggestion before. I, I'm very much in, in, like to see businesses succeed. I like to be pro-business as much as I can. However, in the, in the, in the last time we spoke about this, I, I mentioned the fact that if, and I understand the vacuum cleaner, the car wash, and Stan, I understand once some, something gets on your mind and in your head, it's a barking dog, you know, some people, it doesn't bother, other people, you know? So at any rate, we did make suggestions, and, and they, they did do something with the lighting. Whether or not that's all that should have been done, I don't know. But I, I mentioned that in some places now, we have mobile up there, we've never got a complaint, and I go by there, that you could put these things on a timer. And I asked them, the, one of the people, it wasn't a manager, but they are on a timer, and they shut off automatically, that I expected that maybe that could be done, just to not have any of those issues coming forward. It's just a certain time, boom, it's going to shut off that vacuum cleaner, the lights are going to go out in the car wash, the door's going to be closed, and it's done until the next time. It seems like most of the, the complaints is the car wash, the vacuum, the lighting, and gas deliveries, which is, is kind of tough, but, um, Rick LaFawn and I were just recently involved in a, a complaint business against property owners, and we sat right at this table, and, correct me if I'm wrong, it was very successful, that, that when everybody left, everybody didn't get everything they wanted, but everybody had a clear understanding of what to expect. And I don't know if that's what's necessary in this thing, if it's possible, probably not, but, um, I, I, I just, I, I agree with what's being said. It seems like some of the issues are existing, although, Stan, I have to say, they're not, it's, it's not a continuous thing, it's a once-in-a-while thing, but it, it should not exist at all, I will say that, not exist at all. So, um, I think I've spoken my piece.
The blower is constant, I mean, three, four times a week.
Yeah. And those...
The pictures of, of owner himself doing it, and over here, and this noise, you give one, one paragraph.
Okay.
Okay? The measure of noise level, and as the health department did this, they should have it on record.
Right.
I, I'd like to see a copy of it.
But that, that's...
The board of health is an agent, will perform, oversee, or provide instruction for all noise level measurements. As an option, the board may require the party responsible for the suspected excessive noise to hire a qualified sound engineer to undertake a study to qualify noise emitting from the premises and submit a written report of a study to the board. Noise level measurements will employ appropriate equipment that is properly calibrated to industry standards, as noise, as noted below. Noise levels shall be measured when...
All right. I'm going to make a motion.
Yeah, we, we have, we, I am aware of that, I don't want to cut you off, but I think most of the people are aware of that.
If, if we're in fifty feet, we're, we're within fifty feet, and I don't think they actually, usually actually done this, nor the board of health has got anything on record for this.
Right, right.
As, as he's saying, that's all.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that in light of the fact they brought questions in terms of the noise, abatement question that's been properly, should be properly before the board of health, that we refer the matter to the board of health for their advice, consent, and recommendation on the same.
On the noise?
That's what he's complaining about.
In this particular issue, I think he's complaining about the noise from a blower, is that correct?
That's, no, he's quoting the, he's quoting the regulation...
The board's board.
Can I finish, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's quoting the regulations from the board of health. So therefore...
Yeah.
If that's the concern, then let, let's get an opinion from the board of health if that's what he's looking for.
And, and I agree with you, Kevin, because they do have a decibel meter that they can measure that, but that, to me, wasn't the issue early on. Your issue was the car wash and the vacuum being operated after hours more than it was, and now we've kind of changed it to the vacuum and the car wash making too much noise during the day?
Well, actually, it's, it's the whole ramification of it, the vacuum, the car wash, excessive noise, lighting.
Okay, all right.
So it's, everything, you need to change it.
So Mr. Donovan...
And also, you suggested you put a chain up here at eight o'clock.
Yeah.
He took that down.
All right. All right, we're going to, Mr. Donovan has made a motion, I don't know if anybody cares to, Mr. Donovan has made a motion, just to be clear, to have the Board of Health investigate the noise issues at that location.
What noise issues? Which ones?
The ones he's complaining about.
Vacuum cleaner and car wash. Correct?
When the blowers go off in the car wash?
Okay, let, please. The issue is, he has stated on the record, before us, that he's quoting the noise bylaw or regulation that the Board of Health has promulgated. That being the case, then it's my motion that the matter be referred to the Board of Health for their advice, consent, and recommendation on the issue of the noise that he's complaining about.
Just the noise alone, right?
That's the only thing they have jurisdiction on. So then the question becomes, the Board of Health can then opine on his complaint, and we can see what they say.
That's fine.
Because that's not within that jurisdiction.
I was going to suggest that he go, have you ever complained to the Board of Health about the noise?
Oh, yeah.
You have?
Well, this is why...
That's all I need, you said yes, that's all.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Donovan.
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Burbine. Any further discussion?
So in effect, the hours of operation will stand at Sunday, 6:00 a.m. to Monday through Sunday, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., until we hear back from the Board of Health.
That's correct. Is that part of the motion?
I think that's the practicality.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't changed his hours longer.
Unless you want to make a motion. Unless somebody wants to make a motion otherwise to change the hours.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Donovan on the floor, on the table right now, and seconded by Mr. Burbine. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
I'll oppose, that's unanimous. So we'll refer that to the Board of Health, and we'll wait for you to come back to us with that result, okay? Thank you, Mr. White, thank you for showing up. These issues are never easy.
I'm sorry.
They're never easy, you know? Okay. Let's see. Okay, we have, setting November 4, 2013, special town meeting warrant. Mr. LaFawn?
Mr. Chairman, you should have a copy of that warrant in your folder. Keep in mind that the questions posed in these articles are not necessarily what's going to be recommended, as you well know, particularly with regard to the capital plan. However, these are the requests by the towns, by the town departments. Couple of quick notes. First of all, in Article 1, the point is to return what was appropriated from the stabilization fund to the general fund this past year. Article 1 is intended to return that to the stabilization fund. Let me first say that we do not have a free cash certification yet, however, we do and expect that it's going to be slightly, just slightly north of $1 million, that's what we're hoping. So it's, hopefully, within a couple of weeks, we'll be able to provide you with some opinion as to exactly how much is going to be available and what, how we deal with these warrant articles. Moving on, though, keep in Article 2, the first two points there, the Eastern Cedar and then the payroll issue with the clerk for the Strawberry Valley Golf Course, those are unpaid bills, and those will be paid from the Golf Course Enterprise Fund if approved. And on the next article, Article 3, there's a number of articles here that, if approved, would be funded, for instance, the sewer department, as you know, and the water department have revolving accounts, I'm sorry, our enterprise accounts, and the fire department request for an ambulance, the intent would be that that would be a lease purchase over some period of time from the ambulance receipts account. So those will be outlined in further detail when there's an actual recommendation on these warrant articles themselves, so. And that's all as of right now. Article 7, there's a blank in terms of funds, I believe the chairman of the Griffins Dairy Committee suggested $2,500 was the appropriate amount. And those are the only specific items that I think you don't have in front of you. There's obviously be some language enhancements that I presume council will have. I know our treasurer collector has made a recommendation, Article 14, perhaps in further detail on 14. But other than that, if you have specific questions, I'll be happy to do what I can to answer those.
Questions?
The warrant is closed now at this point.
It's closed, as of Friday, correct.
No questions? All set? Thank you, Rick. Item number six, discussion of the Plymouth County Retirement Association's funding schedule for pension costs. I had...
Mr. Chairman, just, I was wondering if you should perhaps take a vote on, historically, do you take a vote to affirm or set the warrant, or, I'm telling you what to do, but if that's your history, that's your history, that's fine.
We generally review the articles at a later point in time, once, in vote to support and not support, I don't know, if you needed a vote, we could certainly take it.
I just want to make sure that...
Kevin, you have all the history of that.
It's, I guess the question would become, if anybody wanted anything removed from there, now would be the time to do it, other than that, it can sit as stand, but you're correct, in the past, we have voted to set it, whatever anybody's taste would be. If something on there that doesn't tickle your fancy, and you want to take it off, now's the time, other than that.
I have no problem with leaving it right the way, I don't have anything to remove at this point, so it's... We're going to, when do we meet again? October 21st.
Yes, I'm correct.
September 21st, so we have another meeting before this will even get put out. It'll be a little more detailed, I would hope, at the last, the next one.
Correct, there will be recommendations on all of the...
And the language will be tightened up.
Right, there'll be a specific, exactly, exactly. Like, there'll be a specific recommendation on a capital spending plan, specific recommendation on any line item transfers that might be requested or required, but that will be coming, correct. But again, those will be part, those will be the motions that then go along with these articles.
Okay. Okay, we'll move along to item number six, discussion of Plymouth County Retirement Association's funding schedule for pension costs. I don't know, I think the board is aware of the fact that I had, well, I asked to have this put on our agenda. To me, it was very, very disturbing that we received a notification from the Plymouth County Retirement Board that our assessment for this year was going to be increased, $500,000, was it?
Correct, approximately 26% was the initial projection.
And I, to me, this whole retirement issue has always been a concern, I've raised it up at other issues, I certainly don't want to be unfair to anybody, I want to support it, but to me, some of their calculations, some of the way they've done business, they create this problem, and then when it's not successful, they come to the town. So there are a couple of things, bonding things, which I don't quite understand, again, to me, it's, this particular issue, I don't know how many times, Kevin, you might know, that they've delayed, it was supposed to be paid for at a date certain, and they couldn't reach it. So it was going to impact the cities and towns by a large sum of money, so they extended the date down, and they keep extending it out. It's 2030 right now, and they...
It's 2030, correct, and I think by statute, 2038 is the limitation, and this vote...
It's 2040.
2040, Tom, thank you. And this would extend their current schedule to, from 2030 to 2034. So it's within the legal limitations, however, again, it still raises the question as to the need to extend the, extend the schedule, that's a different question, right?
I think also, just to interject, I think the rationale for 2034 is to give towns, if this pension obligation bond legislation passes, then each city and town of Plymouth County has the option of basically going out to bond for a 20-year period to try to bring up the funding commitment to 100%. I think there was a rationale for that also, in addition to getting the, you know, each town and city's assessment down by extending the, you know, the date to 2034.
And I know the conversation that the chairman and I had, where there's some, and I agree with you, Tom, the, I mean, the point obviously is to have some reasonable fixed rate on some amount of funding that an actuary has decided is the obligation of each community. However, there's a lot of moving pieces, that's a new tool that may or may not be approved by the legislature. There's the calculation with regard to the anticipated return on investments, there's obviously issues that some people might have with regard to, you know, the benefit structure, although that's, again, a legis, that's an issue set by the state legislature, not at your local retirement board. But there's a lot of moving pieces, and I know the chairman and I had talked about, you know, whether or not it would made some sense to have someone like, like Mr. Tom O'Brien into to lay out these factors and how they impact each other and how they impact our assessment. That was kind of the gist of, one of some of the things Mr. Chairman and I talked about. Whether or not anyone thinks that's a good idea is another issue, but...
Well, I just...
As long as you tell them he can only give you the Reader's Digest version.
Well, no, and in fairness, in fairness, Mr. Franny and I had this discussion before that the county retirement board voted on the extension of the schedule too. So there was some frustration about the lack of knowledge as to what was going to happen when we discussed putting this on the agenda, but again, this is one of those budget buster type issues, that's not going to go away anytime soon.
I think maybe in terms of, from an educational standpoint, it may not be bad to have the treasurer and Bill Farmer, the director, to come up and explain the, you know, what has happened as a result of the stock market, what their investment portfolio looks like, and what the future can hold, so I think the board members can get a feel for, you know, what the, what their expected rate of return is versus what the actual is, and what that means for the future, you know, rather than, you know, granted, at some point, the money has to be made up, and I guess it's a question of, you know, when and how, and, you know, perhaps for budget planning purposes, it'd be advantageous to listen to them explain that all out.
Exactly.
My other question, what, how much control do we actually have over the whole process? They say this is the assessment, that's the assessment, is that not the case? I mean, we...
That is correct. We have no control per se, although I think, and as you've seen, there's certainly local boards of selectmen and administrative people who have some influence over the decisions by the retirement board, but ultimately, there's no authority here.
So even for that, I think, for that reason, just to let them know, this is what we're looking at, it might make sense for them to come in.
You know, here's a town where we, since my involvement, and I'll say it again, we just keep cutting and cutting and cutting and cutting, and we finally get to a point where we might be able to put something on, and no, no. And I, this has been my fear right along, that they were going, now the legislature made some changes to it, but it was only a token. I mean, if you read it, it's in this thing, this is online, Plymouth County Retirement, their projections are based on 8.25% return and 4% growth, you know? And so they live up to every penny. I really don't care for the makeup of the board, because all those members of the board are in the retirement system. So to me, it would be, I believe they are, I shouldn't say that, I don't know that for fact, they're not? None of them?
One is not.
One is? Okay.
One is not.
One is it?
Oh, one is not. But to me, it's somewhat of a conflict when you're, you know, voting on, and all of them have been in political office, and you know, it's tough to make a decision when it's involved in your friends and stuff. But I, I think my decision has fallen on the town, on behalf of the town, the kids of this town, stuff like that, we gotta, we gotta step up to the plate and say, "Listen, we know we don't have a say, we know you can handle the bill, but we're tired of it."
Yeah, that's another reason to have them come in, I think.
Right, right. I just, I'm not trying to, you know, charge down the road or somebody about that, but the legislature's the ones that makes these rules, and they just make a little bit of a change, and here we go, $500,000, we're done. Tom?
Yeah, just to Kevin's point, I do think it would be information to bring Mr. O'Brien or Mr. Farmer in, not only to explain it, but in my last meeting, he talks about what cities and towns can do to try to contain pension costs. For example, he'll talk about, you know, rolling in overtime into a base salary, or, you know, sick leave buyback, or, you know, some of those other things, that basically now, you've driven up that base salary, and as a final pay system, you're paying a pension on a, you know, much larger cost, because those things are outside of, you know, pension cost. And he, I think he can help guide communities on what you should and shouldn't be doing. So I think it's informational what's happening, but he feels pretty strongly that a lot of it, they get the blame, but it's really the actions that cities and towns take to drive up, you know, some employee costs unnecessarily. So to me, I'd love to see him come in, because I think, to Kevin's point, you know, you want the Cliff Noe version, because he can go on, but I think if, you know, you try to give him an agenda, I think he'd be very informed.
Well, you know, here's, as I perceive it, that they could take a retiring employee, and I've seen this, actually went through a contract where this was written, and upon given written notice of retirement for the last three years, your salary would be increased by 25%. Fine, so you increase this big high, so you get this high pension at the end of the thing. If it was the town that allowed that contract to go through, would be forced to pay for that, but it isn't. It's split amongst all the cities and towns in the community, so it doesn't behoove you to try to, to try to, is, maybe I'm saying that wrong, Kevin, you're more of authority, but it seems like anything that has to do with this pension is divided amongst the cities and towns. So if one town wants to take care of a good employee, they can boost up his benefits at the end, and you don't have any recourse on it.
Well, there's a good question you can ask.
Yeah, no, I think...
Believe me, I have a lot of questions.
Yeah, it's a good point, because, and I, to Tom's point, I think, I think for a long time, people in selectmen and town administrative types have been cognizant of the impacts of the last several years of employment, because there was a time when, when those types of clauses were rather common.
Oh, yeah.
It had become common. And I, but it is a good question, you know, if one or two towns or several towns are have eliminated or are trying to contain those, but other communities aren't, how does that impact?
Yeah.
How does that impact us all universally? I think that's a, that's a very good question.
And why don't we invite the school committee to that meeting, too?
Yeah.
No, I think you're right. I think you're absolutely right. I mean, actually, I would like to see our representatives, because that's where the ball stops with them. They're the ones that can make these changes, and they don't, and the funny part, as I see it, it's not the rank and file that are putting this out, it's not the rank and file, it's the ones, well, whatever.
Well, I think, you know, and a lot of, I mean, I think we all see and hear at times the abuse that has historically been, that people have seen, I guess. But I think in general, Mr. Farmer and certainly Mr. O'Brien would probably give you some sense of confidence in the way the system is actually being run, but there are some economic factors that have just, have hurt the system. And I also think that, that it probably hasn't been long enough that people have been very cognizant of these last three years, some of these issues, I think it's really maybe the last half dozen years where that's really become a real push by the county to...
And you're right, but I really think if you were running a pension program, you should have built up some kind of a cushion for this, you know, I mean, I just don't know. And one of the things that disturbed me too, was they said that people are living longer. Well, you know, every two years, you have an actuarial report, and I often thought that that was the job of an actuary, was to determine what you're getting yourself into, but obviously, within the last two years, people all of a sudden magically started living a lot longer, so, I don't know, okay, that's fine, enough said.
We'll set something up and put some parameters, time and otherwise around it.
Is that all right with you guys?
No, sure. I wouldn't dare to go otherwise right now.
Okay, Farmer, Donovan? All right, thank you. We don't need a motion, we're just, Tom Manager's report?
I will refer you to my written update dated, you caught me off guard, Mr. Chairman, I apologize.
Nope.
What was it dated?
The 6th?
Says the 6th, but I think it was updated...
I think it was updated since then, yes. Couple of quick things. First of all, as you know, I did provide you with an update from our engineer, written update, which I thought was very good, and unless there's any objections, I'm sure there aren't any, I'll circulate that to other people like the finance committee, et cetera, because I think it's good background for a lot of people. As far as the memorial auction, I am meeting with the chairman of the Conservation Commission tomorrow, we have this little good faith but circular problem here, where they're looking to have some greater information with regard to the... to have some greater information with regard to the process that would be utilized by a contractor to, to clean the arch specifically, but obviously, we can't, we don't have a contractor, because we can't bid, so we've got this, this, this little circular issue that we want to try to work out in good faith, like everybody's working together, but it's just a little, I think, frustrating for everybody at this point. The RFP for this management firm for the Strawberry Valley Golf Course should be out and available sometime by mid-October, so any of you who want to get into the game of golf course management, let us know. And I think, short of, I think I'll just point out one other thing with regard to public works, I recently met with the, with the park and rec commission, and I had had a nice conversation with the chairman previously, and I know one of the things this board was concerned about was trying to memorialize some sort of more consolidated park, public work style department down the road, and they seem to be very amenable to that too, so, so they have other issues with regard to programs, et cetera, but those, in terms of the, the, the maintenance and the, the jurisdictional issues, those, I don't think that's going to be an issue, so I, again, it was really my pleasure to meet with them the other, the other night. I'll leave it at that in the interest of time, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to interest.
Questions?
Feel free to read the entire report.
I think it's good.
Yeah, very comprehensive.
It's great to have it in advance, it really is.
Nice.
I know Dory put the last one up on the website, so if that can continue, I think that's helpful too for the townspeople.
Okay, unless there's questions from the board, the last topic is public comment, which-
You sure it's not public announcements, Mike?
Public comment, it's here.
No, he asked him.
Oh, I did that.
Did he?
Yeah, you got something?
You missed it, you got something?
He mumbled it.
Oh, go ahead, you got-
Now, the other one I think might be useful to residents is that Saturday, October 5th, is the household hazardous waste-
Well, that, you're right, absolutely right, good.
-election day, because that does happen just, I think, twice a year, it's going to be from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., we'll be down at a highway department at 225 Center, Central Street. And just for people, again, nine to one, you can bring oil-based paint stains, photographic chemicals, fiberglass resin adhesives, gas, motor oil, tires, degreases, pesticides from your shed, fertilizer pool chemicals, mercury thermometers, drain cleaners, moth balls, so it is something that residents want to be aware of. I do know, I'm going to a health board meeting, this is funded by the board, but I think they're looking at 120 people, first come, first serve, and then afterwards, I think there'll be some sort of a fee, I'm not sure if the board of health has said it, and they do say that you will, Abingdon residents will need to have some sort of proof of residency, which I'm assuming is a license or something like that, but it is good to do some fall cleaning and get rid of things.
No, that's a, that's a good question, it's a good, thank you. Any other comments?
Two quick things.
Sure.
The last couple of years, we've gotten a review of litigation, pending litigation with the town council, could we get that against, usually in the early fall, mid-fall, but we get that, and then-
Is, is that usually done in a written format, or is that-
No, he usually comes in-
Okay.
Yeah, in executive session, in case there's any questions. And then, in the past, we've also been getting some receipts versus expenditures reports, just to see where we are as far as on the budget, if that's maybe something that could be generated for, for our next meeting or the following meeting.
You're right, that was helpful, I don't know if we could use the same format, maybe at the end of the quarter or whatever.
Yeah, the freedom of choice coming out.
Yeah, you know, the most. All right, good job, that's some good things. That hazardous waste, they're usually stuff that they throw at us when we're in a parade or something. Okay, any further discussion, if not, accept a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Deion, the seconded by Mr. Burbine. All in favor, all opposed, that's unanimous, thank you.